I'll call to order this meeting of the Marshall County Board of Supervisors' regular session, May 21st, 2025, at 9:00 a.m. here at the courthouse in Marshalltown. Notice to the public, the Board of Supervisors welcomes comments from the public during the time allowed for discussion. You are requested to approach the podium and use the microphones. State your name and address for the record and limit the time used to present your remarks in order that others may be given the opportunity to speak. The normal process on any agenda item is for the chair to read the item from the agenda. The Board is given an opportunity to comment on the issue and/or place a motion on the floor. An opportunity for discussion may be presented, at which time the public may participate, and a roll call vote will follow. Roll call vote, please.
Heil.
Yes.
Hibs.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
If you would rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I move that we approve today's agenda.
I'll second that.
Roll call vote, please.
Goodman.
Yes.
Hibs.
Yes.
Heil.
Yes.
Moving on to the consent agenda, which includes approving the previous regular session minutes of May 7th, approving claims as audited, file manure management plans. Blue Valley Pork, number 59449, 3255 140th Street in Marshalltown, signed with changes. MTM Farms LC, number 61010, at 3016 Marsh Avenue, Haverhill, signed with changes. Corey Eldridge, number 65974, at 2741 Brown Avenue, State Center, signed with changes. Justin Whitaker, number 66798, at 1775 Benford Avenue, State Center, signed with changes. Caleb Applegate, number 69350, at 2816 170th Street, Marshalltown, signed with changes. Jared Whitaker, number 70163, at 1458 180th Street, Clemmons, signed with changes. That is the end of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve today's consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Goodman.
Yes.
Hibs.
Yes.
Heil.
Yes.
Item number six, renewal of the Delta Dental Plan of Iowa, discussion and possible action. And I believe Jeannie has given us, oh, that's the vision plan, we have the copy of, but do you have any comments or anything you want to say about the?
This is just the yearly renewal that we do for Delta. We have to renew yearly with them.
Yeah. Okay.
We reviewed, so.
Any questions from you guys?
No.
Okay.
I move that we renew the Delta Plan of Iowa.
I'll second.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Goodman.
Yes.
Hibs.
Yes.
Heil.
Yes.
Okay. Item number seven, vision insurance provider change, discussion and possible action. And so we have the Delta Vision Plan quote in front of us that has been reviewed and it's being recommended to change by the benefits committee, I believe, so. Any other comments you want to add or say?
The cost is about a dollarish more, depending on which level family employee one, yeah, what level of coverage you're getting, but a whole lot more benefit. The benefit committee, we actually held a couple of different meetings on it, and I don't know how the second meeting was, I had a conflict, but.
It was really good. There was a consensus with the first group as well. It's a lot more, we're getting a lot better coverage. We, with the premiums, so this premium is 100% employee paid, we don't contribute to it, it's completely voluntary. So, the employee only rate only went up a penny. Employee plus one went up $1.58, or $1.35, and family went up 58 cents. We did lose one local provider, which is Wolf Clinic, so we requested that they pull some claims information from Avisys to see who had utilized Wolf Clinic.
Under the vision plan.
Under the vision plan.
Right.
And we did not have anyone that utilized Wolf Clinic here in town. There were only two claims for Wolf Clinic, but it was out of town. So, we didn't see much of a loss there, and the benefits committee agreed.
And it may be possible that those needing care from Wolf Clinic can do it under the medical plan, depending on what it is?
Yeah, if there is medical necessity there, they can, but we still have six other providers in town that are fully covered by the new Delta Vision.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
No, thanks for your work on that and.
It seems like a no-brainer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we appreciate the information. I would entertain a motion.
Oh, boy. Well, I'll make the motion to approve the change in vision insurance provider from Avisys to Delta Vision to authorize submission of Delta Vision application and quote and execute the termination letter for Avisys effective July 1, 2025, and authorize the Board Chair to sign all necessary documents.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Goodman.
Yes.
Hibs.
Yes.
Heil.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item number eight, approval of general safety manual for Marshall County, effective May 21st, 2025. We have copies of the manual, we had a chance to review it.
It was just the one page on the page five, which was just removing an item that some folks also ran up by Sheriff Phillips. You know, for folks that are really trained in rescue, the item there on page five that talked about, "Do not attempt rescue alone," you know, is something that, you know, we hope, we hope everyone always uses common sense when something is going on, but that was kind of why it was there. It actually came from IMWCA like that, and so that's why it was left in there. But there were several here that felt that it should be removed, and so that's why the recommendation is being made to remove that one sentence.
Any other questions or comments?
Sounds good to me.
Yeah.
I would entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the updated general safety manual for Marshall County, effective May 21st, 2025.
And I'll second.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Goodman.
Yes.
Hibs.
Yes.
Heil.
Yes.
Item number nine, MOU between Story County Sheriff's Office, the Marshall County Sheriff's Office for Housing of Inmates Without a Per diem Fee. Sheriff Phillips.
Joe Phillips, Sheriff of Marshall County. Typically, agreements between sheriffs are basically gentlemen's agreements, but we're finding out in recent years that some of these formal agreements with the MOUs are in place, that we each entity understands what's expected. We do share housing space with Story County, with keep separates, high risk, and other typical inmates, that we exchange one for one, depending on the circumstances. We're finding a lot, a longer stay with inmates, so we want to make sure there's a formal agreement when it comes down to per diem. And also with that, with jail renovations that Story County has done, and hopefully we will at some point, that agreement's in place where we can move prisoners from one facility to the next, to be able to have not, have not increased budgetary costs. So, there is a, up to $25, and that basically would cover your consumables, your provisions, so. But for the most part, we've been really good about exchanging one for one, and make sure that everyone's happy with that agreement. And so, it's just basically a formal agreement, so everybody understands. And we maintain those standards with the national corrections about pre-compliance and best practices, and maintaining compliance with our state jail inspector, with the DOC, so it's just a formal agreement.
Great.
Thank you.
Questions?
Nope.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between Story County Sheriff's Office and Marshall County Sheriff's Office, outlining the terms for housing inmates from one county in the other jail's facility without a per diem fee, and authorize the Chair to sign.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Goodman.
Yes.
Hibs.
Yes.
Heil.
Yes.
Item number 10, zoning variance 2025, variance 6024. Tyler.
Tyler Kelly, Marshall County Planning and Zoning Department. We had a zoning commission meeting that was held May 13th. Through that meeting, a subdivision variance was approved by the zoning commission, and it is hereby recommended for you guys for approval. Mr. and Mrs. Honstein requested a subdivision variance, so they could split up a 40-acre parcel that they have currently into a couple two-acre lots for their family members. The reason they didn't want to go through with a typical subdivision was in the future, they never knew if they passed away, it would, there would be some issues with trying to put the parcels back together if it was a subdivision in that case. So, looking into the future, these two-acre plots here and there might end up switching acreages or switching size going forward, and that was why we went with a variance instead of the typical subdivision.
Is there a chance for this to become a bigger subdivision than currently what it is?
No, there's farm ground all the way around them that they do not own, they just own that 40 acres. It's currently in CRP, the majority of it now, so those housing sections will be coming out of CRP. But there, I was promised there would be no further splitting than what was required for those family lots.
Sometimes promises are hard to enforce.
Yeah, yeah, but when we talked back and forth, it was, it was a big concern for me that they knew going forward that it was going to be an issue to put the, it's a lot easier to split them than it is to put them back together. So, that, that's why we went with a subdivision variance, because if it was a subdivision, we would have some major issues taking it out of the subdivision and putting the parcels back together in the future.
As I understand it, there's some livestock operations nearby?
Uh, yeah, you probably can't scroll out from that. You get further out. Uh, one more. Yeah, so that's, that's where the property's actually at, north of, was it Melbourne? They all run together, we had about four subdivisions that went through that particular property. So, yeah, north of State Center. And then I think there's a, up to the north, there's one farming operation, but that Main Street Road, there's a lot of residential properties on there, so it really isn't changing the, I guess, the status of the community by any, by any means by putting up three extra houses there. Yeah, two, two extra houses, yeah.
Yeah, I know, I, you know, I did receive a few phone calls from area farmers, and were concerned that this, you know, about this becoming bigger than just two or three homes.
We have been getting some calls south of Marshalltown on developers that want to look into, it'd be an R3 development, or an R2 development, and some of those areas for a little, it would be basically condominiums and stuff like that, but this is nothing like that, this is.
This is just family?
Four family members living on a 40-acre piece. And we've been, we get a lot of these come through where, hey, we want to build a cabin for mom, so she can move out there, so we don't got to put her into a nursing home. Hey, my uncle wants to split off a piece and put up a house by the pond, that's pretty common.
Yeah, I, I think the fear is what happens when family members are no longer present to.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. And when we looked into the non-severability clause to attach to some of these properties, but the general understanding was, when, when they do pass away, it's going to the kids. So, like I say, it'll be easier to put it back together than it is to split apart.
Yeah, I think the concerns are non-family members moving in at some point in time in the future, in fear of nuisance suits.
Yep, yep, and we get that a lot with each one of these zoning commission meetings. A couple of farmers came in that were neighbors to that property, but as, as far as the aesthetics of that, that area, three more parcels, any, actually, this is how I need to say it, any further parceling of that property would require a subdivision variance, so that would have to go through this whole process all over again.
So, it's your recommendation today that the Board of Supervisors approve this?
That is, that is my recommendation and the recommendation of the zoning commission.
Any other questions, comments?
Thank you for your work on this, Tyler, and the zoning commission, seems to be a reasonable use of property here, so.
I'll move that we approve the zoning variance 2025-6024.
I'll second.
Roll call vote, please. Hibs. Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
All right, moving on to item number 11, Adopt Resolution 2025-0016, 2025 Noxious Weed Control Plan. Tyler.
Tyler Kelly, Marshall County Weed Commissioner.
This is something I'm very passionate about. I spent over 15 years in Story County controlling noxious and invasive plants, so it is something that I'm very happy about, bringing some of my knowledge and experience over here to Marshall County. Chapter 13 of the Iowa State Code, more called the Noxious Weed Law, requires that once annually, the Board of Supervisors submit a resolution, basically recognizing the Iowa weed law, and providing a public notice to landowners that they must control all noxious weeds on their property, actually, all, all public landowners, private landowners, and various secondary roads and Iowa State DOT. So, this document is basically saying that you, as the Board of Supervisors, recognize the noxious weed law and promise to uphold, uphold it via me, the Iowa Weed Commissioner. If you read down through it, this is something that we actually had to do quite a bit of in case of failure to comply in order to control the weeds. There is a set process in the weed law that goes through how we control the noxious weeds off property, the penalty fees, and how we go about getting back those fees from the private landowner. There's an assessment process that goes through the real estate that gets added to their taxes. So, generally, we didn't have to do it very often, but sometimes we did have to use either secondary roads equipment or conservation equipment, go on private property, and then bill that labor back to the landowner. I went back some of our records, going back to Kuntz's days, and there was a few issues where they paid private contractors to do that. That's not exactly how it was spelled out in Iowa code, but I can understand at that point in time. I have been in contact with the County Conservation Board and secondary roads, and kind of gave them a heads up on this. You're probably familiar with most of the weeds on it. One unique thing about this document is, this was a chapter 58, it was an add-on they did, I don't know, about five years ago, and it kind of put them into a class system. Although this chapter 58 put Class A and Class B, we're also supposed to uphold the rules of chapter 317, the original weed law, to control stuff like poison hemlock and some of the other species that aren't labeled out in the Class A and Class B. Poison hemlock's a real big threat that we have in Marshall County, and I've been seeing more and more of it. I've had a couple complaints that I'm currently dealing with about that.
Is there a particular area of the county?
No. It's, I can say, yeah, it's all over. I'm starting in the process right now of mapping areas that I think of are concerned in our secondary roads, in our State DOT, and here in town, and working with those officials or those representatives to get those addressed before I have to go through the process of sending a letter, getting anything done like that. Most of the time, it's just a phone call here and there, and haze us on your radar.
So, you've got a prioritized list already?
I, I have some GPS locations, and I'm getting the process of mapping everything out, yeah. It'll be a busy next, probably, month and a half trying to get everything together, and usually just driving around on other calls is where I see a lot of these.
Any other questions for Tyler?
No, it's a good control plan. I appreciate you putting this together and taking your experience from Story County and bringing it here and putting this plan into action.
I look forward to the implementation of it.
Do you like to make a motion?
Sure, I, I move, I move we adopt resolution 2025-0016, the 2025 Noxious Weed Control Plan.
I'll second.
All right. Roll call vote, please.
Goodman.
Yes.
Hibs.
Yes.
Heil.
Yes.
Thank you, Tyler. Item number 12, Hazard Mitigation Plan Designation of Applicants Authorized Representative. Kim.
Good morning, and thank you for allowing me to do this virtually. Kim Elder, Marshall County Emergency Management Coordinator. This is just allowing me to put in the application for the Hazard Mitigation Plan Grant to re, renew our Hazard Mitigation Plan, and I'll go into detail about that in the next line item.
Okay, I got it.
Basically, I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
No, go ahead, Kim.
And that's basically just allowing me to sign the grant paperwork.
Any questions for Kim on this?
Kim did share, it's, it goes through 27, which, you know, is quite a ways out, but she did share that FEMA said, "Get it in now so that we assure that we get the funding." So, okay, yes, let's do this, so we get the funding.
Okay.
All right, then I'll make the motion to authorize the Chair to sign the designation form authorizing Kim Elder to execute on behalf of Marshall County, the mitigation project, and file it with the Iowa Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Management for the purpose of obtaining financial assistance under the Robert T. Stafford Disaster Relief and Emergency Assistance Act in the Code of Iowa, Chapter 29(c).
I'll second that motion.
All right. Roll call vote, please.
Goodman.
Yes.
Hibs.
Yes.
Heil.
Yes.
Item number 13, Resolution 2025-0017, The Local Match for Hazard Mitigation Assistance Program. Kim.
Kim Elder, Emergency Management, again. I have a document in front of me, and it's basic, I have sent all the documents digitally to Nan and Sharing there. Basically, this is the resolution pertaining to the local 15% match for that said Hazard Mitigation Plan Grant update. The Hazard Mitigation Plan is updated every five years. We start in that fourth year, because it takes about eight to nine months to update it. The state last year started getting the procurements at the state level, making it easier at the local level, we don't have to go through all the RFP process, and they, we, we still could, but it's so much easier, they gone through everything. So, the vendors they presented to us, they have eight vendors that applied or sent information in, it looks like, you know, all of them are highly qualified, eight of them were high on the scores. The ranges would be from about $59,700 down to $25,000 for the total rewrite for that plan. The expenses used to be around $10,000 for our 15% when we procured locally, but since they're, they're doing it as a whole state, that, that price has gone down, because, at least our cost has gone down because of the procurement at the state. Let's see, what else do I need to tell you? So, it looks like if we go with Atchison, which is who I would recommend, I've worked with them before, Atchison Consulting Service, again, scored high, they're at $30,400. That would leave the local amount at $4,560, that's the 15%. It is up to the Board Supervisors, you know, if they, if they would like to go with that, that would be my recommendation. Like I said, there's varying amounts and varying, varying dollar amounts on here, but they're, they're all qualified. Atchison I have worked with in the past, she used to also work for Homeland Security, the owner of that company, so I've worked with her a lot and know that, know their work really well. So, like I said, it's a five-year plan, it will not, our local hazard mitigation plan will not expire until 2027, and I believe it's in March, but we will write the plan in 2026, and I will obviously be in conjunction with whoever we have for a vendor to write, help write that. The reason that we don't write locally, I'm qualified to write it, but the process for FEMA to get that approved when a local emergency management department writes that, or updates that, has been a nightmare for many emergency managers, and they end up basically wasting their time on it and having to go back and get a consultant to do it in the long run. It's, it's just easier for those consultants to, to work directly with FEMA because of the time constraints. So, those hazard mitigation plans allow the county and all the jurisdictions within to apply for hazard mitigation dollars. So, those dollars that we get for the Siren Project would be a good example. Anything that we, back in the past, we had a property that was bought out because it was in a flooding area. There's a lot of different mitigation grants that are available, there's some secondary roads, highways, that type of thing, that they may, may apply for certain things through that hazard mitigation grant, kind of in a long, roundabout way, because as you apply for those different grants, they actually ask if you have a local hazard mitigation plan that is current and recognized by FEMA. So, there are a lot of grants that actually ask that question, that allows us to say, yes, we are compliant, we have that hazard mitigation plan, and it is updated. Do you have any other questions on that?
I don't, I don't think so, Kim. Thank you, that was very thorough.
Great, thank you.
I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Resolution 2025-0017, Local Match for Hazard Mitigation Assistance Program.
I'll second.
Roll call vote, please.
Goodman.
Yes.
Hibs.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
Item number 14, Public Forum, Time Set Aside for the Public to Make Comments of Topics of County Business Other Than Those Listed on This Agenda. No action will be taken on any of these topics brought up in the public forum. Would anyone like to say anything?
Nope. Nope.
This is Kim Elder, Emergency Management, just real quick, I have a part-time job posting for an emergency management assistant, so just kind of wanted to put that word out there.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
So, Kim's going to get a sidekick, maybe.
Maybe. All right, moving on to adjournment, item number 15. The next regular session is Wednesday, June 4 at 9:00 a.m. here at the courthouse, first floor meeting room, all business to be acted upon at that session should be submitted to the county auditor and recorder's office or the board of supervisors' office by Wednesday, May 28 at noon, there being no further business to come before the meeting, the board, this meeting, before the board, this meeting is adjourned at 9:31 a.m.